Okay. Awesome. August 26th, it is 4:08. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do a roll call for Planning Commission. Howard Tripp. He's here. Joey Edwards is on his way. Steve Stevens.
Here.
Dave Clark-Berle is having a baby. Jason Marufell. Kayton Heatherland here. Our county commissioners, and you're all here. Commissioner Fever.
Yep, here.
Commissioner Mutch.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Okay. Changes or additions to the agenda? We have minutes to approve from August 12th. We may need to table those, we're not here, right?
I was not.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna table meeting minutes from August 12th. Updates?
Um, I think the updates that we have, um, you know, is that we're gonna continue building towards, we're gonna talk about a little bit of tonight, the comp plan update and our engagement with community builders. So there's gonna be, um, some exciting opportunities coming up on that. Um, we have several conditional use permits in review, um, right now, largely from our outfitter and guides, um, trying to come in and navigate a conditional use permit and also our new commercial recreation permits. Um, so, uh, we've really been, um, actively engaged with all of the current outfitter and guides. Um, so we've, uh, been spending quite a bit of time on that. Um, we've also, um, have a mining CUP coming before us in October, um, for a gravel pit mine addition at Box Creek. And, um, we have, uh, we've met with Timber Ranch, um, about their preliminary, um, plan update. We've also talked to the owner of Gateway Subdivision and, um, the potential for, um, potentially a new owner on that project and a kind of northern tier build out, like a kind of a long range planning idea. But it's, it's all just, um, a concept stage and we don't have really too much to report on it other than, um, there is some activity from subdivision interest, um, that continues and, um, so we'll be looking at that. We are going to be sending you some more, um, questions and, um, looking for some guidance on the sign code. Um, uh, we're in moratorium on the signs and, um, we do have a more, a little bit more guided questions that we're gonna be sending out to get some feedback on what you'd like to see from the outcome. We've sent out the one questionnaire. We'd love it if you have some time to send those back. Um, but we'll be sending out more, so, information on that.
Alright, we'll move us right on down to new business. Um, but I'll just let you lead both of these, the development trends, zoning considerations, long range planning.
That sounds great. So today, uh, tonight, we just really wanted to have a conversation, um, with Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, kind of report out from, um, community planning and development, what the trends look like locally. We've got a presentation to share with you. And then we have super exciting, um, happenings going on in the world of water. And so we asked Bryce if he would, um, please join us this evening and just kind of talk about where the water planning's at and the, um, enterprise, uh, planning and, and so this all kind of ties in together a little bit. And, um, so we thought, um, he had a bit of building, so we were really super excited for him to come, um, tonight and kind of speak about the water planning aspect of things. Um, Michael is here from, um, Public Works, uh, as well, Director of Public Works, just to kind of, um, tie into some of the things that I'm gonna talk about tonight. So, um, we'll go ahead and start the CPD presentation. Okay. If you do it from slideshow, you can get rid of everything else. There you go. Okay. Awesome. Can drive.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we just really wanted to talk about what are the development trends that we're currently seeing in Lake County? Um, we are, um, seeing custom builds. Gone are the day when we're really taking in building applications, um, for probably, um, full-time residents of Lake County. We're just not seeing those as the majority of what, what's coming in. We're seeing a decrease in the amount of building permits that we're getting, but the valuations are going up. Um, and, um, there's an increa-, there's a, an increase in the complexity of site planning. What that means is that we're starting to see development in areas in less desirable locations. Um, so demand, so development pressures are really pushing us to have to start looking at, um, um, excessive slopes and, um, very difficult driveways and, um, just a lot of different features, um, that we haven't ever really, you know, contended with to the degree that we are now. Almost every site plan that comes in has a new level of complexity or something that we haven't experienced yet. So, development pressure is really starting to tap into those more remote areas or, you know, the areas of Panarc where the roads weren't built out. And suddenly now there's, there's a desire to build there as an example. We're also, um, dealing with probate plat, something that everybody, um, is aware of, I think. Um, but let me just explain in case that you aren't, I don't wanna assume. Um, so, we have a certain portion, and we'll show them to you in a minute, in the side of the county that was subdivided by the, a court action and not done by subdivision review. So, um, not unusual that we have some, not unlike a lot of communities, that we're rushing to, um, get their, uh, subdivisions recorded before, um, the Senate House or Senate Bill 35, which required subdivision regulations and review on parcels under 35 acres. So, our turquoise lake estate, our, um, Beaver Lake Estates, our Four Seasons Jim Valley, Panarc, um, you know, we have a lot of subdivisions that were created before our zoning and subdivision regulations were. But, these are a bit more unique. These were, um, created to basically serve, uh, the division of ownership between family members in a parcel of ground or a large portion of the southern part of the county. Um, and so, the, um, course came in and, uh, didn't take into account topography or drainage or any of the things that, the road system, circulation, or even whether or not they might be, um, changing the approved plat in a couple of months. Um, these were just done by a court action to appease the errors of this property. Um, so it's, it, so it's leading into, um, some, some difficulties when we start looking at how these are developed, um, because the public infrastructure wasn't put in, the roads weren't put in, the, um, you know, so there's, there's a number of different things, um, and, um, Michael is definitely seeing the impacts of this from access issues and drainage issues, um, which is the next bullet point there. Um, we're also starting to see a lot of height issues. Uh, we are often, um, now asking for, um, either an engineer or surveyor to verify height, um, but at the framing inspection, because we are starting to see, um, very, very tall, um, construction, um, and which threatens view sheds and ridge line development. Um, and so those are, are on the rise. Um, and then we're just seeing a lack of infrastructure and basically that is the roads. So we're seeing development wanting to go into areas that the road systems were never put in. So unlike a normal subdivision and even the majority of our pre-1972 subdivisions, which did construct roads, um, areas like the EE Hill, um, area, those roads just weren't built. They were plotted, they haven't been surveyed, and people have put them in wherever they kind of choose to put them in. Um, that's kind of been the history. So, we just wanted to show you a couple of examples of some driveways. This one, if you are driving from, um, Leadville to Twin Lakes right before the junction of 82 and 24, you probably are really familiar with this driveway. Um, and, uh, here's another driveway that, um, Michael and I are trying to figure out how you, we, uh, look at, um, allowing a driveway that we may never be able to get emergency response to. We may never be able to get an ambulance in. And even when you sprinkle the house, um, we're just seeing a lot more difficulties around these kind of situations. And so this highlights those probate plaques. Um, so this is what, um, we're talking about when we say the probate plaques and the EE, uh, hill area of the county. And of course, this is Twin Lakes and the, uh, parcels to the south of the, uh, highway 82 and to the north of 82. And then, oops. I must've gone outboarder. Um, and this is what the topography looks like, um, from Google Earth. Um, so, you, so we see these major drainages, we see some roads that have been constructed, um, some that have not. Um, but this is not a landscape that is immediately receiving of, of necessarily the plating that's gone on without any type of subdivision review. Um, and this is just Gordon Acres, um, you know, another area of, of the county that, um, predates subdivision and that we find a lot of difficulties with, with, um, the way that the access is filled, where we've got to have septic systems and wells and we don't have adequate spacing. Um, and wow, some of my slides got, seem to be bad. Okay, there were a couple more slides that I wanted to, um, show, but for some reason they're not here. Um, this, what I wanted to show you, and I think that we can see in this area, when you see these, um, little parcels, these are the probate areas. And when you see the green in here, these are the plaques that got rerecorded in just a short amount of time. But, some of those records still exist in the vaults or in old files. And so, sometimes when we have real estate agents that are selling properties in this area, not local real estate agents, but, um, are out of area, um, kind, sometimes they don't know how to navigate that there's two versions of these. We actually have people that buy properties and have no idea where their roads are or where they're located or what number lot they are. Um, because there was a, a, a second set of, of maps that were recorded. Um, what this also shows, and I didn't think I was quite there yet, but I meant, so, um, this is the, the water service, um, in the blue. So this shows the, uh, Water Augmentation Service Area of the county, which is really exciting and that we'll be able to, um, uh, with Bryce's help, entertain applications to provide additional, uh, water resources to areas of the county. Um, but as you'll see, all of, all of this area that we've been talking about is included in that as well as, um, also, uh, Gordon Acres. But this kind of shows every, all of these different areas. Some of these are in the Parkville Service Area, and so they're outside some of these areas up here to the north. But I'll let, I'm not gonna spend too much time on that, because that's Bryce's area of expertise. Um, so, as we start talking tonight, I just wanted to kind of set, talk about the pressures that we're seeing. The majority of building permits that are occurring are, are happening in the southern part of, of Lake County. Um, we're seeing development, um, you know, largely all over, but the highest contract or concentration of, um, building permits that we've issued have been in the southern portion of the county. Um, and that's why it'll be great to ta-, have Bryce kind of tell us about water in that area, because, um, that is certainly a very desirable area for the potential of development. Um, so, some of the things that we want to look at coming up are, uh, future land use planning. Um, part of the comp plan process, I brought the comp plan today. If anybody wants to look at it, I know you all have copies of it. But I would encourage you to, um, really kind of dive into it. I've gone through, I've put sticky notes every place that I could see where there's something that kind of speaks to where we are now. Our comp plan is our advisory document. It's what we need to be going to when we're trying to figure out what we do long range. And it's time really to, um, uh, do an update to that comp plan. Statutorily, we are required, uh, we're, I don't know of a penalty if we don't, but, um, under statute, it recommends that we update our plan every 10 years, and we're at that point. Um, and we're, we'll start looking at a 10 to 20-year, um, plan as part of our review. But, um, what I really wanted to talk about tonight, kind of open up for some discussion, is really that focus about balancing the environmental constraints, um, the public view sheds, and, um, the, is there a chair over there? Okay.
I'll do that.
Um, okay. The fiscal health of the county and its public service partners, and again, the environmental constraints, the natural hazards, EPA management areas and valuable natural resources are all part of the landscape. And future development needs to be sensitive, sensitively and safely integrated into the environment. So, we just wanna be, um, thoughtful as we go, um, through the, the next, um, kind of planning into what, what are our, uh, maybe disconnects in, um, some of these areas? I might just go back for just a moment and just give you an idea of, um, you know, the po-, the, the, um, idea that this is kind of where our parcels lie in all of these different areas within the water, um, service plan. And so, having the water come in is a utility, but a utility that's not about delivery, but more about the source. So typically, you know, deliver, you're thinking, or you're, it, what do you think about a utility? You think about how do you deliver it? How do you get there? Um, the amazing thing about the water is it's actually the source. And, and it can provide the ability to further develop in these areas. Um, it can provide the ability to subdivide, add ADUs. Um, the board has, I mean, just, uh, that residential use is, is a use that will be eligible under the OCG plan. And so, um, as we look at these areas, um, and thinking about just, you know, in real time, what the existing conditions are, what is future subdivision look like in this area? Um, a lot of these parcels, uh, would be eligible for, uh, uh, subdivision. Some of them have to go through a major subdivision because of a requirement in minor subdivision that speaks to road access. Um, but they would still be, uh, eligible for subdivision or increased densities through ADUs. So, it's just good to realize that, um, the minimum lot size, um, in recreation is a minimum of three acres. In Gordon Acres, it's own business, the minimum lot size there is 5,000 square feet. So, we do have, um, you know, some ability in this area to realize densification through, um, the, uh, water resource that the county has. And a desire, I'm sure, I think Bryce will be able to kind of tell us, um, what early indicators are, maybe about the interest in the water, but I would imagine it's, it's pretty, um, great, a deal of interest in the area. So, any questions for staff before I turn it over to Bryce? And, um, any thoughts? Oh, you can go, Bryce.
Can you press the escape?
Oh, sorry.
Well, thank you, Anne.
Yeah. I, uh, appreciate this. I'm here to talk to you all. Don't you mind if I, yeah, just come up here to drive?
Do your thing, man.
Uh, so I know some of you that have been on the Planning Commission for a while, I've talked to about the water augmentation plan before. Um, but for those of you that are new, I wanna just go over some of the basics, because we're kind of getting closer. It's, it's a long time coming. We've had a decree for the augmentation plan structure since 2017. But getting kind of the nuts and bolts together has taken a while and, and we're finally making some serious progress on that. And we're at the point where we can actually talk about what opportunities this is gonna provide, but also we need to talk through some of kind of the consequences we see coming that are definitely very relevant for land use staff and for Planning Commission and for Public Works and infrastructure. So, um, I did talk to the, uh, newspaper reporter last week, so there's a brief article on the augmentation plan in this week's newspaper on page 12. It's, um, not very exciting, but it gives you the basics. And also it just kind of lays down that the, you might have heard about this barn pond down in Twin Lakes. The water is flowing in Twin Lakes Village in a different way than it has maybe in the last few decades. Um, and so there's been a lot of consternation and debate about what that water flow should be like. And so the State Division of Water Resources has been really involved. And they actually gave a final determination at the beginning of August, um, where they kind of determined that the barn pond stream flow is actually a man-made ditch. It might be 100 plus years old, but it is man-made. And the natural course of the stream is actually, uh, further to the, that would be the west, called West Fork and Bartlett Gulch. But what that means is that they, we can't just make water go down to the barn pond magically. It just, it, it's gonna take some sort of, um, framework within the water courts and within the water law that will allow water to be going down to that and what we call augmented. Right? So augmented is basically when we replace water outside of the natural stream it's going to. So when we use a well, we're taking water out of the stream ser-, out of the, uh, tributary or out of the river source. So we need to augment that back to the river, right? And that's what the augmentation plan is, is we take a little bit of our water. We have a small portfolio in the county and we can entertain uses that are out of priority, like wells or maybe livestock ponds or things like that. And we have the ability to then recharge or pay back the river for the water we used for that augmented use. So that's kind of the basics of what an OCG plan is. The, um, you know, so as we're getting closer, I'm gonna have a public-facing website next month to start spreading the information to folks. But this is, this is the tagline of the enterprise. We're dedicated to the equitable and efficient use of water resources. So, water has this amazing ability to provide equity, not only socially, but economically and environmentally too. And so, we have a very small water portfolio, but we need to be very judicious about how we use it, both efficiently and just knowing that it, um, can really affect the quality of life we have in Lake County. So we need to use it well. Some background on our water rights and the augmentation plan. So the technical name of our augmentation plan decree is called 98 CW173. It was, that means it was filed in 1998. We didn't get the decree until January 2017. So it took almost 20 years and there is a long history within that. Basically, the county didn't have any water when it first filed. It just kind of had ideas of where to get water and throughout the course. And then fits and spurts as it got dropped by people, it just, it took a while. And finally, in the mid 2010s, we were able to get some progress on it. In 2017, we got the actual decree, which allows us to use our water within the augmentation plan area for augmentation uses. So this is, I want to emphasize though, this is very similar to augmentation plans that exist in else, other counties nearby throughout the state of Colorado and that have existed since, basically, 1972. When the water laws changed and augmentation plans became allowed. So you have Center of Colorado Water Conservancy District in Park County, Upper Ark Water Conservancy District in Chaffey and Fremont, Lower Ark Valley Water Conservancy District, well, well. These exist a lot of places and most of them were founded in the late 70s to early 80s. And so we actually are kind of, have the benefit of seeing how they operate and we're actually modeling our enterprise operation on how they operate. The difference is that those are all kind of semi-governmental entities. So they're just, they're independent from the county and the city governments, just like Parkville, Leadville, San are in our county. So they have just a little bit of different operational leeway. Our water is owned by the county and it will be owned by the county forever. We have no interest in separating that out into a different entity. We have enough boards and separate entities to deal with already. We'll keep this one in-house. But, you know, typically these act as water utilities, so they're kind of a water provider. Um, they're not necessarily the thing that dictates land use, and within reason, but in these areas. Um, and we can talk a little bit more about that. Um, so we have existing users of our water under the augmentation plan, which is the Mount Ice of Golf Course. They use the majority of our water. And they are actually written to the decree. So they've been around, they're county-owned property. They're so integral into our water use that they were written into that whole 20-year process. And so we have specific language that refers to how do we deal with them and the permissions they have with their water and everything. So, um, they use a, a lot of our water now. The other big portion of our water goes to paying just the evaporative loss off of Hayden Rec Pond. So Hayden Rec Pond, you know, it's, um, just a few acres big, but it's the one, it's owned by the county and we're holding that water there against the way the river wants to take the water. So we have to pay the river back for the evaporative loss of having that standing body of water. And it's actually a lot, even for up here where it's frozen six months a year. We, we pay, uh, about a quarter of our entire water portfolio just for the evaporative loss on Hayden Pond. So, like I said, the water projects enterprise. So this is where we take the augmentation plan and we create kind of an operation, a utility structure within the augmentation plan, which is our legal ability. This is kind of like the business of selling augmentation units. So we can, we're gonna divvy up our water into augmentation units that are just kind of as small as necessary. Right now it's looking like a tenth of an acre foot, which all has to do with just how much water you use and how much water you deplete versus how much water you recharge into the soil with your septic system, say. And we have these little units that we can divide up and sell off. And that allows us to contract and include those folks' water use in our plan. Let me know if I need to slow down or explain anything. Just try and go through the basics. I want to clarify though, because I do get these questions all the time, what the difference between Lake County's augmentation plan and water resources versus Parkville, right? Parkville Water District is a semi-governmental entity. They run their own ship. They are a municipal water provider, which means every drop of water they provide goes through a water treatment facility and is, has all the chemical treatment and everything like that. We, in Lake County Water Resources, we're dealing with what's called raw water in the industry, right? We're just dealing with water that's coming out of the ground or coming from the stream. No treatment, because when you get into treatment, that's water quality. That's a whole different arm of the government and everything, so. But Parkville, they have water rights and they also meet those water quality standards. So they provide the water to all of the city of Leadville and a lot of the surrounding areas of Leadville. So basically the core we have, right? We will not be redundant with Parkville. The, the purpose of the Water Enterprise and Water Resources in Lake County is to encourage or allow development outside of that core. Parkville is who we wanted incentivized development to go to. If it's within the city core or within that three-mile planning area, you know, a parcel might not have direct access to Parkville water, but they're planning on building 40 houses there and they're a thousand feet away from the Parkville network. Well, then we're gonna say, you need to connect to Parkville. If, the other thing that goes with that is that Parkville was very involved in, or aware of our decree as it was getting formed over those 20 years as an active water utility. So they have little stopgaps in our decree where Parkville has automatic, like, kind of, um, checks on anything we're doing. So, we're not planning on being redundant with Parkville, but we couldn't be anyways, because they can formally oppose anything we try to do with our water. Um, and that's a good thing. That's because they're the senior water rights holder. We're junior to them. The way Colorado water works, we're always gonna protect the senior-most water rights. The other thing is, Anne talks a lot about, you know, the development pressures we've had on these really funky parcels. Um, we, parcels that existed before June 1st, 1972 have an exemption built into them. And that's a lot of what we deal with in Lake County, is that we have a lot of parcels, a lot of mining claims that have been around since way before 1972. And so they have an exemption built into them. Um, the other thing that's very interesting is that because of those court probate maps, even though those entered into the subdivision process and even though they were created after 1972, they're legally recognized as legal parcels in Colorado and they have the same exemption thresholds for water wells and everything. So that's how all these parcels with no further regulations, no further land use code, can go apply and get a well and drill a well and build a home there, because that's outside of our augmentation plan. They're going directly to the state and dealing with those old grandfathered-in laws. For any new houses that come, if we wanna make a new lot with a new house, or really importantly, if you wanna add an ADU to your lot, that's not covered by that exemption, right? The state of Colorado considers that exemption for one dwelling unit, in-house only, and ADUs are a separate dwelling unit. So if we want, and there's a lot of laws that are incentivizing ADUs in different land use codes, but there's this big conflict, which is that our water laws don't allow the ADUs without going through some sort of augmentation plan. Um, and then, you know, we also have a lot of this in Lake County where you have existing wells for homes before 1972 and then we have a lot of agricultural wells. So that's why a lot of these places in, I've seen some in Southern Lake County that have really great wells that they can irrigate 10 acres and feed 10 cattle, is because that well existed before 1972. So that's the lay of the land. If we wanna add new things, we can add them within this area. These are the two augmentation plan areas, but for all intensive purposes, we'll just, this is the OCG plan area. Covers a lot of public land, you know, there, within this, there's a lot of private land, but a lot of that private land, and all and I'll get to it, is actually kind of already into conservation easement or something like that. And so where we have this big chunk of developable, legally developable land that now has these eligibility to use the OGG plan is in the EE Hill area where we have different land use concerns. So the Water Projects Enterprise, that's that business arm of the OGG plan. You know, the way it goes is you go apply for inclusion. And inclusion is a big fee to get in. But before you're actually in, you have to get reviewed by the division engineer down in Pueblo. They basically say, yes, this well is in the OGG plan, hydrologically is feasible. Then it comes back to the Water Enterprise Board, who will be the Board of County Commissioners. And they have the ability to be discretionary on what they allow or don't allow. And so I think in Lake County, given that nothing is normal here and we have all kinds of unique things we're gonna do with, that discretionary power is gonna be very important, you know. And, and staff and with help with land use and public works, we wanna prepare the board to make a good decision when it comes before them. But there will also be a land use decision process as well.
Can you explain what you said, what they would be able to allow or not allow? What are those limiting factors?
Well, that's what we need to decide a little bit, is that right now, the way the decree is written, without bylaws to point to that say, we shall only entertain these uses. We kind of are, the decree just says, you shall serve if you can. Right?
Okay.
Or, or you shall accept the application rather, if you can. And the enterprise will decide if you serve or not. So any sort of leeway we want, and I'll get into that at the other part of the slide, which is that we're not going to allow every use, right? We, we just don't have the amount of water to allow every use. So we are gonna have some constraints built into the bylaws. The, the last part of this is that, so it goes to the division engineer for review, then it comes to our board for review, then it goes to the posers, so they can say, no, we don't like it, or yes, we do. And then it eventually has to go to the state engineer for review and approval. And so I had to make myself a flow chart because it was too complicated to keep it all in my mind. But because it's so complicated, the enterprise has plans to accept the application and keep it until everything's permitted and it's good to go for all that.
Who all makes up the enterprise board again? I know the Board of County Commissioners, that's it.
Yep, yep, for now.
So I got a quick question. So this is kind of complicated. Can you give me the example of EE Hill? Are they not already a parcel out there, public use land and people are trying to buy it? And what's the scenario here?
So, yeah, the scenario is that there's folks in EE Hill that buy a twenty-acre parcel.
It's now already platted, right?
It's already plated as twenty acres.
Right.
The minimum acreage for a recreational zone is three acres.
Okay.
So they can technically subdivide that parcel.
Okay.
We'll get into the complications, it's not just that easy, right?
When they go to subdivide, that's where the problem comes, right?
That's when, and that might be where those problems created that we want to mitigate or not see. But that's a.
So I don't, I don't think, so, so I think it's flipped from what you're saying right now. I think that what people are, the, the idea or the intent of this to provide water, EE Hill may not be the example we're talking about. EE Hill is an example of what a consequence could be to this. Because then people are taking these platted, already platted lots and potentially making them, increasing density in an area where we never really even created a good subdivision plan to start with. So I think that's why EE Hill is brought up, is just because EE Hill may be like a consequential.
Well, I was just kind of looking for the example of what we're talking about, not the EE Hill.
I mean, a really good example would be, there's a person on County Road four that owns a rather large parcel and he wants to subdivide it into two parcels.
I would like an ADU in my backyard.
Right, or they want, a developer comes in, buys a hundred acres, he wants to develop it.
There you go.
But you don't have the.
The water. And it's a lot cheaper to pay us to be included in our plan than it is to go through Water Rights and all that. And a lot faster too. But I wanna end the conversation on EE Hill because we'll get to that. The basics are, we have a limited portfolio, okay? We have one ditch right that yields an average of thirty-four acre feet. Not that that, those numbers mean much, just pretty small. And then the city of Aurora, through our partnership with them and the way they're written into our decree and everything like that, they provide us forty acre feet a year out of their storage or out of their trans mountain waters. So that's really secure. The ditch right can vary snowier to snowier. If it's no snow, we don't get any ditch water. If there's a lot of snow, like this year, we got way more than thirty-four acre feet. The forty acre feet that Aurora provides is solid, secure. Will be that same way until Box Creek is built, who knows, thirty years from now. So that's our secure water that we really have to play with when we're talking about contract use.
That's not a lot of water.
It's not a lot of water, especially when seventeen acre feet of that storage or evaporative loss. Hayden Rec Pond though, was built under some stipulations, it had to be a recreational use only facility for ten years. That expired in two thousand twenty-one. It's built and has the ability to be a storage pond or facility for the county, right? It can hold roughly fifty acre feet. But that would, to hold it, we would have to drain it and fill it every time and it would kill the fishery. So in the meantime, Hayden Pond has become one of our most important recreational assets in the county. And I don't think anyone has an interest in getting rid of Hayden Pond as it is. And the reason it's so good is that the, the water is full and as water comes in, it just spills out. So it's a one-to-one in, right? But the lake gets oxygenated, the water stays fresh, the fish are happy. If we were to use it for storage, we would have to measure the water coming in and then also measure the water coming out, which means drain the reservoir. And we can't drain it very much before we start killing fish. So one thing I've been working on with, in partnership with Aurora, is the ability to kind of do an accounting exchange, like a paper exchange. So the water level in Hayden Pond never changes. But as we're releasing water, Aurora is filling the exact same amount of water. And then in the spring, when we are filling water from our ditches, we fill the reservoir and Aurora releases the same amount of water that we're filling with. So it's always one-to-one, the lake level never changes, but the color of the water changes. The counting of the water changes. Fifty acre feet for us is huge. For Aurora, that's like less than a rounding error for them in their system, right? So they are totally, not that they don't measure every drop, but they're so much more, they're, they're fine with however they need to help us. Because it's a small ask for them to be a big benefit for us. So if we, there's still some work to be done to put that into storage. But once we can store the dairy through ditch water, then all of a sudden we have this ability to use it year to year, or to bank it, or to be more strategic with it. But right now, that water comes and we just exchange it to the golf course just so that we're using it somewhere. So like you said, Joey, given that we have so little amount of water available, VOCC, and this is a recommendation from me, our engineers and our legal team, we've decided to limit the initial uses until we have more water and until we know more about how this is gonna run and, and how much demand we have. We have an idea of what demand is gonna be, but we don't know until this thing is actually up and running. So the initial allowed uses are gonna be new domestic wells. Commercial industrial use, that's gonna be case by case, that's gonna be, you know, any commercial industrial use will have to come to us with thorough engineering that will be reviewed and everything. Because domestic wells, we have a calculation built into our decree. If a house is this size or smaller, it equals this much water use. Commercial industrial, that's gonna be very individual. And then livestock use isn't allowed use in our decree. And it's a really small amount of water when you add it up. And so it makes sense to just add it on as another, another allowed use.
So a quick question again, trying to figure out the, just to talk about the hundred acre. And you got, comes in, wants to develop it, he wants five acre plats.
Yeah.
Each one of those five acre plats would be authorized to have a domestic well, set a domestic well or not?
If they were to be included in the plan, like let's take, you know, a theoretical subdivision with ten new lots or whatever, and they say, we wanna be included. They can be included on the plan for their domestic wells.
Okay.
But the big decision the VOCC made is no irrigation.
Okay.
So no yards. We've had people request to come in for a domestic well and some yard irrigation.
Right.
And just with the amount of water, because domestic wells, because all that water eventually goes through your septic system, goes right back into the
Right.
river system.
Right.
With irrigation, that's the most consumptive, right? You know, eighty-five percent of the water you put on your lawn does not return to the river.
Absolutely.
So it's just a way more intensive use. And so these are the least intensive uses, commercial industrial, that's where that, you know, discretionary power is gonna come in. But that's also where there's gonna be, most likely, those will come under CUP or some sort of land use review process as well.
Does irrigation include like greenhouse? Or is that, are we talking lawns when you say?
It follows the in-house use as well, right?
Yeah, exactly, that would be under in-house. That's a really, we would, we're gonna have to flush those out in our bylaws every single use because another one we don't know is hot tubs. In Sona County, hot tubs are not allowed use even with your domestic well. You have to pay extra, or you see a lot of water trucks filling up at Parkville Station in Leadville to take water over there to fill hot tubs.
Well, and it's hard because domestic well classification at the state is different than an in-house use well classification at the state. So I guess I just want to point that out too. Because a domestic well on thirty-five acres or more is a domestic well, then you can service three single-family dwellings and you can have outside irrigation and you can water animals and all the stuff. But in-house well, yes, it's domestic use, but it's not called a domestic well. It's in-house use.
Sorry, you're saying, right, the, the domestic well is thirty-five acre plus, right?
Yeah.
But what we're talking, the exempt?
No, I know, I know. So I'm just saying that the domestic well name is a little bit confusing because of those two.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, okay. We're gonna re, I'm gonna revise that then, it's in-house.
In-house domestic.
In-house.
Domestic well, but we'll just say in-house just to alleviate all that confusion, so.
Residential wells or something, you know? Because I think the domestic name just, it gets really confusing with people who have the thirty-five plus.
Totally different things in different contexts.
Totally different. You can't, you said irrigation, can you give another example of like a disallowed, a non-allowed use?
Ornamental pond, like a duck pond or a frog pond or a barn pond.
Yeah, got it, okay.
That's just, those uses are so much more intensive of the water, they just take so much more.
Yeah.
Whereas just the in-house use, you know, and especially if it comes to a septic system, you're losing very little water. And there's just that ability to recharge without any evaporative loss or anything.
So we, we monitor that, right?
So yeah, that's, we, we have the benefit also of learning from the mistakes of the last thirty or forty years of the other water conservancy districts, and we have more technology. So right now, you know, the big problem these other water conservancy districts have is compliance. People not reporting, or inaccurate reporting, or overuse and not knowing that, or not being able to catch leaks and system loss. And so what we're gonna do, what I'm recommending, setting our system up, day one is totalizing flow meters remotely readable, totalizing flow meters on every well that's in the OGG plan. Because we have such a limited portfolio, then I or someone else can drive around the first day of every month and collect all the readings. Because we have to submit our paperwork and our accounting for water use to the state on the tenth of every month. So we can give them an accurate number every single month. It makes, you know, all of our jobs easier, it makes everything accurate. It starts allowing us to build in a buffer to allow maybe more water use faster because we have a better accounting of where our current water demand is.
So with those allowed uses, is there some, maybe you're getting to this. Is there some sort of like tier structure? Because obviously there are some amazing residential uses that would be super well benefited from this and then some that would be, in some opinions, not super beneficial to the county to support water too. So I guess I'm just wondering that, like, like if we're talking about like, oh, just any, I mean, is it, I guess I'm just wondering, is there like a, a tiers, like who?
Prioritization.
Yes, thank you, prioritization schedule or something with that?
That's a, so I think we, we really wrestled with that and I've thought a lot about it. And what I wanna say is I think there's some stopgaps now. We did, we have uncertain demand and uncertain placement of demand. So I think what is gonna make a lot of sense is a market-based approach, at least at first. And there's gonna be some guardrails on that. The guardrails being the limited uses allowed and we also have a limited amount of water allowed, right? We're, we have essentially, what we're gonna have available is ten to thirteen acre feet. You divide that up into a tenth of an acre unit. Foot, that's a hundred to a hundred and thirty augmentation units. That's what we're gonna have initially.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm worried about not being like.
If we start flying through that, then we're gonna have to have some other.
Yeah.
I mean, I keep using this analogy, but it's kind of true. We're gonna have to take off and build the plane around us a little bit because we don't, because of what we don't know.
Yeah.
And we can, we can try to mitigate the foreseen unfortunate circumstances like the EE Hill stuff. But we, we don't know what demand is. What I can tell you is that because this plan has kind of been in the works for so long, the state is pushing us really hard. The state is telling people, Anne, hey, you're supposed to have an OGG plan. Or hey, talk to the OGG plan people. I have, I, just to go into demand, I have, you know, there's one person in Lost Canyon that wants to take his twenty-acre parcel and divide it into four parcels and build four vacation homes on it. So that forces us to have that conversation. There's another homeowner, he already owns a home in Ross Two, which is one of the probate pieces of land that was on probate but has been through the subdivision process actually. And they created an eight, eight parcel subdivision called Ross Two, that's all on a shared well. Those eight homes, they're all very nice homes too, on top of River Ridge. They're having well failed problems. They're not getting adequate water out of their well, that shared well, to serve everyone. And so they are pounding on the door and I've been talking to someone up there, but there's multiple homeowners up there that wanna come into the OGG plan on day one just to drill their own well, and they're willing to do it and pay for it to eliminate that failed well situation. So that's a, that's a big, you know, existing demand we have that's been out there for kind of a couple of years. And, and he's like, what do I do? I don't wanna pay a hundred thousand dollars to pursue a Twin Lakes water share and go through court and everything. Because that is the option, that's the option people have now before the OGG.
Yeah.
It's not that they can't do it, it's just that it's prohibitively expensive and complicated.
Is there a concise list of allowed uses now in your plan? And a, and a list of unauthorized uses? I know there's a lot of gray area too, to be discovered as applications come through. But do you have a list now that shows these things are allowed, these things are absolutely not allowed?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is basically where we're at. As the in-house wells, commercial industrial uses and livestock. And I can point to the decree of all the allowed uses within the decree that we're technically allowed to have and all the calculations go through that and then the ones we've settled on. But these are allowed uses in that broad now. Yeah, and then they're, they're in our decree as, as allowed. But yeah, the irrigation and ornamental use are the ones that are explicitly not allowed. And then we just need to get into the nuance of, yeah, hot tubs, you know, greenhouses, things like that that might fall in that.
So this scenario you had just a minute ago, about the twenty acres gallons before vacation homes on it. Technically now, regardless of your supply of water, they can actually drill in a residential domestic well?
He could build one here.
One?
Correct.
Because he's got a twenty-acre parcel, but he can't do it for each of the sub-parcels, is that right?
He, he just has that one parcel with the exemption.
Currently, but if he, but if he, if this passed, yes, he could go in and get a well for each lot.
If, if.
As long as, as long as one of those hundred and thirty shares is available.
And, and as long as he can meet.
Well, that's kind of what I do, that's. We are controlled. I mean, I don't know if it's first come, first served, but we're kind of controlled by the amount of water is available for those hundred and thirty, right? So is it a first come, first served scenario or how does it work?
I mean, that's why I think we're leaning towards this first come, first served because it's, I mean, so I, I guess maybe we can get to this part because this will kind of show you where I think that there's, we have a little bit of time. And I also think this is leading itself into, these are what needs to be considered for the, the comp plan update.
Can I just add a comment?
Yeah.
To answer your question fully, that I think you might be asking.
Okay.
They, the, the parcel in EE Hill can do it because they've been, because of the court order and probate and, and all of those parcels will give them a well exemption. So they all have a well. The minimum acreage is thirty-five acres to have a well. And so, yes, every, the, anyone with something thirty-five acres or more has the right to a well if they want to subdivide into smaller parcels. And that's the augmentation plan.
Right.
Would allow.
And then if we blend it to a hundred and thirty, then it's giving the water flow and what we have available on the water table, right?
Yeah, I would say for now, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're, because then we can build in buffers, then we'll have the storage ability, which will bring up that dairy three water.
That's later, that's not now.
With five to ten years, that's what we're gonna do, yeah. So.
Can I ask, sorry, another, sorry, thanks, right. I spent a long time thinking about like the philosophical approach to prioritizing our water for X, Y, and Z and talking to folks from Upper Ark Water Conservancy District or other areas and wrestled with it for a bit and also have finally, and their advice is don't deal with the land use issues, just offer the water land use as well in the process and create land development. Um, so that is to your comment or question on the prioritization to that extent.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's just scary like being in, I mean, how many housing meetings we're in and, and one of the biggest reasons that we can't help with our housing crisis is because we don't own utilities and now we're gonna own utilities and we're not gonna prioritize it. That's really hard for me to make sense of.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the questions I have when you talk about it being a first come, first served thing, um, how do you keep somebody from like, better phrase, rushing to the courthouse or to the, um, you know, enterprise to say, hey, I wanna do this. I think we need to prep, set some parameters in terms of how long they have to use it.
Yeah.
So you know, that could approach banking those in anticipation of the.
Yeah, 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 they have to use this.
Really, we had that on top of our mind when it was first coming in because we had that threat, that was a threat. And so there, that is one of the suggested bylaws that you guys should know about is that there's a three-year, you have to, once you're included, you have to put into beneficial use within three years or you forfeit your place in the odd plan and all the money you put into the odd plan. And that, that time limit, I don't know what that time limit is, just, but there should be.
I, I would think it'd be much shorter than that.
On that same, on that same basis, do you have to be anywhere along your personal process to be able to apply?
Yes.
For a share? Or can you just say, hey, I own this property and this is what I plan to do eventually. I need to buy a share. Do you have to be anywhere along the planning and zoning process with development?
It would be just like.
You couldn't because you can't get subdivided unless you have it.
Right, so it'd be, it'd be like, just like as you're, you're submitting, you get your will serve letter from Leadville Fire, you get your will serve letter from the utility company like Excel. This would be a will serve. It doesn't mean that you're going to be, you know, that you're guaranteed, right, but, um.
It could be either, I would think, whether you're not, you wanna spend that money upfront or you wanted to get permission, condition on getting the water.
Right.
Or you can't plat until your water, you wouldn't be able to plat it.
Yeah.
But I have a comment, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
But you could buy the share, what?
Potential. I mean, yeah, you could, I mean, that's where it sounds like that could be, that's where you might need that little time buffer, right? Is that you would need this before you pursued other land use processes.
Yeah.
So, sorry, sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, I feel like I, the challenge with not having any control or and with the utilities, hard filler sand, has not really been where these things are. Cause that has always landed on us to decide, but it is really like the financial aspect or the philosophical approach whether or not we're going to waive fees and, and then also challenges in, you know, maybe not understanding topography or like physical ability to serve, um, because they can serve anywhere sort of if somebody's willing to pay for the infrastructure to get there. So I would, I don't know, just offer the conversation or challenge you on like this philosophical approach of prior, like.
But if you own, if they have to buy the water rights from the county, if a developer came in and like wanted to develop, I don't know, down at the end of County Route seventeen or something, right, and you wanted to put in housing down there, they can't pull Parkville down there. And so they can either spend all their time going through water court or they can come to you. Then there's a potential for them to offer somewhat affordable housing because you control those water shares that he needs, he or she needs. Right? So there still is that like incentive piece, but if those all get eaten up. So what I know is, what I know from my world is that I know that these will all be gone right away. But I know who they're all gonna be gone to right away and they're not gonna be those people. And that's what, that's what's hard to see. It's like, this is super exciting and I know we've been working on it for a really long time. But I think it will be to the guy who has his four vacation homes that wants to subdivide his lot. And I think they are the only ones that have money right now to buy lots and they have, they're the only ones with money right now to build. And so the developers, they're not in yet, cause this isn't available. So they'll miss the boat. And, and I think that's where I worry about. It's not at least like saving some pieces for those opportunities to be able to say, well, you know, a, a, and, and going back to your point about land use can control it, I agree. If we could do it simultaneously, like if we could go into the, I mean, we've spent so many years counting on the fact that water has been its own buffer, natural buffer for us for subdivision, that we've not had to worry about like people subdividing in areas that can't really, because they can't do it, they don't have water rights, so we're not worried about it. And we've spent so much time doing that, that we haven't created a land zoning code that, that protects that. And now if this is open, it's only small enough, so it only happened a little bit, but it's still, I think, will, will happen in all those little spaces without it being directed toward, you know, because we don't have the land use code caught up to the fact that this is not an option. Like I don't even know if something's in a platted subdivision right now, like my lot. Would I be allowed now if these were available to say, I wanna subdivide my lot, even though it was in a sub, a platted subdivision?
If, um, if you.
Like, I don't know the rules on that. Can you, I've never, I've just said no because you don't have water to do it.
You could have played for a platted.
And then subdivide our lots further. So like that subdivision was always platted and counted on by the county for that to be the subdivision. You know what I mean? It's like, that's just, it's like these little weird things that I guarantee you people are gonna be knocking down our doors for. And I just think we should be prepared for it because they already asked about it and have for the last ten years.
Well, I wanna get like, cause that leads to this discussion where we know this EE Hill area you have. I mean, Anne did a good job of explaining the issues down there, right? Like legal parcels, they already have well exemptions, so we're already seeing some development down there.
Yeah.
Uh, but Melissa Decker was talking, you know, probate people don't know subdivision and land use. And what's really interesting about EE Hill is that the original probate maps that Anne was talking about were, this entire area was divided into two to three acre parcels. And then six months later, they redrew the parcels in the current state we have them now, all but one, which remained two to three acres. So, you know, there's already been some consideration, but there's no central entity in charge of this. There still isn't, there never will be unless the county's like feeling extra generous and wants to take over. And then there is this large turnover in property ownership. So there's also, it wasn't just that the water wasn't available. It was that most of them were in one owner's hands. That owner passed away, his heirs have chose to fire sale. So we've had a turnover completely of ownership, but also all these new owners, and that's why we've had so much housing development down there. Is just because it's been, you know, made recently available and a lot of people think it's paradise. Um, but it's all zoned recreational, three acres of lot size minimum. So what I was looking at, I was like, man, that's tough because I think when I had this discussion with the planning commission last July, we were like, oh my God, every one of these parcels is gonna be eligible for minor subdivision. But when I was looking through the code a little bit closer, I found that one of the approval criteria for minor subdivision is that the proposed subdivision does not require the construction of a new access road. Well, none of these parcels have an access road now, so they would all require construction. So wouldn't that require every one of these division subdivisions to go through the major subdivision code?
Yes.
And so I, I mean, so I just think that's a really, that's a very thorough review process.
But that leads more into what, you know, Heather is saying. Um, so it, that means they need to go through some three stages of, of review. But for the person that wants to create four lots and and, and, um, EE Hill, I don't, I don't think that, I think that that's, does more separation between, um, you know, that the, that this'll go to, um, those deeper pockets for development, you know, that, that.
Third, you can build a road anyway.
Right, and, and, um, so it, I think it's just, they'll have to do a little more process at a minor subdivision. Um, but I don't, I think it further separates it from having the water serve something more intentional that sorts the.
And I agree with you, like EE Hill is kind of such a mess out there that I think you'll have it less frequently, maybe. I think there will be these handful of people that are kinda waiting in the wings for that to do, for to be able to subdivide. It's the ones actually closer to town that I think you're gonna see more more of. That's, that's gonna be just development we didn't anticipate. People adding density in areas we didn't expect them to do that in because this was always our like safety net, you know?
Hey, it's just very late county. We were always able to say, we don't have this, whereas everybody county did.
I mean, I, I was able to read lots of people out of here by saying, sorry, can't subdivide that into your five, you know, cabins that you want for all your people. And so, and I agree that that should be a land use thing that we, but I don't, I don't know how we could possibly create zoning, you know, like, you know, land use to protect that. So it was almost like you say, this is your starting point of water and then we're gonna have to grow from there and hope that we can start putting these things in place as we go, but.
Well, that's where I think like we have the opportunity with the comp plan revision, you know, I just think there's.
Well, I don't think that's gonna help us with zoning code. I mean, we're starting.
I don't either, but it, but I, I agree, I, but I mean, seems like EE Hill is out of character with its zone code, right? If we don't want three acre minimum lot sizes down there, why wouldn't we pursue a rezoning of EE Hill? And I know the reality.
I actually don't, I actually don't care if there's three acre lot sizes down there. That's not my issue. It's just, it's more that that's, we're gonna spend, we're gonna, if that's where we're gonna send all our water. Is to dividing into three acre lots, like is that the idea that we have for the water?
So we could, I mean, the, the way that we've been chatting about thus far, we have the ten acre feet, ten to thirteen acre feet. And we're trying to wean the golf course further off of the water relying, they're relying on of the counties than we give another ten acre feet.
Uh-huh.
Um, or so, or five. But we could always set a limit on the opening of the odd plan, right? Say we're going to, um, we're going to open up for five acre feet of use and learn from this. And we are not going to, um, you know, go beyond that until we.
Yeah, that would be as well.
When are, when is the plan supposed to open up? When, when would you be able to?
I mean, we're, we're trying to work on it right now so that it's done this fall.
So this is a year before we have a new comp plan anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that would be helpful because then while we're doing the comp plan process, we're understanding what's happening with that small amount that you're starting with.
Right, well, that's what, I just think ten, ten acre feet is, yeah, whether it's five or ten, we're gonna start with a small limited amount.
So you think if you started with a ten, you actually potentially have twenty or thirty available, you're starting with a small share of what you think totally would be available? Is that my understanding?
Exactly. We wanna make sure that this water, because we're all gonna be learning, we wanna make sure this is from our most firm water supply, so it comes out of that Aurora water. You know, so that we're not dealing with the additional calculation of dry year yields and everything like that.
So what do you think will actually eventually be available in the odd plan? In, in acre feet, not in shares?
That is impossible to say. My plan is to acquire three hundred acre feet of water eventually and have, be able to supply the barn.
But right this minute, it's ten.
But right this minute, under our current considerations and until we know what our demand is, I think ten to thirteen. And we can limit it to ten, thirteen months.
And there's a potential that that's all we'll really ever have.
Um, there's a potential for that, for sure.
If, 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 if we went through a two or three-year drought, there's a potential that there's not a substantial overage of that number.
No, what, what's gonna happen is that as soon as we have the ability to get the hidden pond up for storage, that's going to allow us to expand our portfolio by roughly thirty acre feet more.
Okay.
And we would, but make it secure too, because we could store the water and that would allow us to store our variable water and allow more of that forty acre feet open. That very secure forty acre feet just.
Shares, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Would.
But that's the, so this is the catch 22. We have to start realizing some return on investment. We spent twenty-five years and probably a million dollars on the water.
Totally.
And, and to acquire more water is increasingly expensive. And so, um, that's where the enterprise allows us as a business opportunity, we, we kind of, the enterprise is exempt from table rules. So we can store water or store money, store water to lease it out and start building some bank accounts that we can actually invest in the infrastructure and acquire.
So it pays for its expansion.
That's the goal.
So without it being a prioritization, but sort of, I like to compromise things. Um, would it be, and, and I guess I'm wondering if anybody else has done this or i- if it would be palatable to like say, okay, well, seven acre, and I know nothing about what these acre feet translate to for a developer, right? But if you, if you chose a number and you're saying, these are first come, first served water shares, but then we have this other portion that's allocated specifically towards, and maybe it's like a multitude of things. It's like people adding ADUs because that adds housing for locals or it's a developer. You know, like something that goes towards like, could you do that? Where you're like, this is first come, first served, but then this little pool over here, just to see what happens for the first year, you know, like you see.
For deed restricted, yeah.
Well, and I don't even know about deed restrictive just because we don't have them yet, but if you had like a developer or you had anybody that was coming in, I don't know. And I know that complicates it, but like, or just developer to not complicate it, that's gonna do something that creates primary housing. I mean, is that possible to like hold a few acre feet from the first come, first served just to see if that would be utilized and see what?
I think it's possible.
I just wonder if anybody else has done that, like.
I'm trying.
Created a pool, two different pools, you know?
I think the easy, simple answer is no, because of this approach of like just do the mark, you know, the market demand. Um, but I'm also wondering, cause I think in my head, looking at if you were to imagine Anne's map of the augmentation boundary there and then the corridor and all the development we want to have and where we do have zoning. I mean, we, in my head, it really, I would hope it would focus on the existing subdivisions. The periphery of the Parkville Water District. Again, I, I'm curious, I'm interested to see what those conversations look like and added into, in density or development around the periphery of Parkville. Cause I don't know if we, like having augmentation water available is one thing, but to actually create an incentive to have them like get in the Parkville boundary is really the ideal scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't know what those conversations would be. I'm like trying to imagine what those conversations would be involving the water enterprise. Um, because we could just say, oh yeah, you can have water, but is that actually like what, like we, we really want people to get into the Parkville Water District.
Yeah, aside from.
Inhibitive and you're, you know, I mean, I don't think we're offering discounted water for different uses. Like everything would be the same cost, right?
Yeah.
As of now.
Per augmentation.
Yeah.
Did I understand your point to be that whether that could be an incentive for affordable housing development to be a draw for that?
Offer.
More.
More. Like that's our gift, right? Cause we can never get it. So that could be part of the county's.
So where, like, I guess I'm just thinking about conversation where on the periphery of Parkville Water, do we then like offer and incentivize that we're like not pushing out development too far from Parkville? But.
Incentivizing that we close down.
You know, like I think that's tricky.
Yeah.
And that's kinda where we, we land in like those circles and, and I've thought about that a lot. But you're like, okay, nevermind.
Yeah, we, we encourage and incentivize affordable housing projects outside of the core of development.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's where this water would be available.
They'd almost have to be immediately adjacent to your point, but how in the world do you delineate and incentivize that?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. It's a.
Well, there's not very much available to do that. Um, and, and I think that, I mean, just from my experience in, in hearing people who, who want water, it's, it's the, the only, the only primaries I can think of are primaries that have donkeys or animals that want water. Otherwise, it's always been second homeowners that wanna buy the twenty acre piece of land outside of town and split it into two.
What I can tell you is that if someone has two donkeys, they wanna come into the odd plan, I would be so happy to give them water because that's such a good.
Yeah. No, I agree. And I think that's why it's so hard. Cause I'm like, I'm seeing in my brain, the majority of the users on here not necessarily being what we're trying to encourage. And that's what I'm fearing. And I'm just trying to figure out how we can incentivize it to, to balance. And I just, cause I do think this is such a great thing and I think it's so awesome that we finally have it. I'm just, and maybe I'm being a downer, but I think it's.
Sounds like we just need a communication plan. We, if we don't want developers to do that, you have to basically tell them you're lending.
I don't think it's developers. I think it's just.
I don't think it's developers, I think it's just. Deep pockets that come and buy this ten acre piece of land and now.
Well, I call them developers, whether they're individual owners that wanna do it or if it's.
Yeah. Investors, yeah.
But my point being is if you just communicate, it's just not available, they won't buy the land.
Or you can communicate that they're gonna have a tough time at the board level where there's a discretionary ability to say no, not necessarily. I mean, maybe there should be some findings and everything built in, but I just think. If we have good communication of what we're telling people when they come in to ask for things.
Right.
You're not gonna be able to tell, we can't tell everyone, you can't bring in a CUP. We just encourage them, well, that's not gonna work in that area, whatever it might be, there might be, that's where I think maybe some guidance documents ready. So that everyone's available or everyone's like on the same page, knows the issues at hand.
I mean, people walk in and buy these lots and they just assume they're gonna get water. If that's the limiting factor for our development and we wanna focus it like around the park water, then just gotta communicate that somehow.
No, because you have to have the regulation, like you have to have it set up in the decree, you can't just say no to somebody if the decree doesn't say.
Well, that's what I'm asking, what's the.
But they, but the board can't.
So.
That seems really.
But they can go around, as you said, and, and get their own.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They can, if they have deep water pockets, they're gonna.
Yeah, according to money.
The discretionary stuff still has to have homeowners, I think, or else the board would get losses.
Right, right.
So if somebody, if somebody does have deep pockets and they come in and they go to water court, does that come, does that take water away from what we have available or is that completely separate?
That would be, if they're requiring their own water, that is separate.
Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't.
Yeah, right now, the, they've just gone away because they don't have the water shares, but now they'll have the water available.
Well, and that was my, if somebody didn't, we said, no, you can't buy shares, they come in and go to water court, they spend the money to do that separately.
Yeah.
That's separate water, that's not coming out of.
Yes.
That's great, that's what behavior you want.
Right, but if, there's no detriment to the county?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't, I just wanted to reflect, maybe it's, brains is like catching up and this is already covered, but, um. Again, some of our discussions around the water enterprise, we've sort of been wrestling with like, what's the right tool? And, you know, I think we've, we've sort of circled around the idea that the water enterprise is like a utility. Same, you, you ask for service, we will say yes or no depending on our criteria, if you wanna control land use, then use the land code.
Right.
You know, and trying to use the land, you know, we're, we're gonna, well, I mean. But like.
No, I agree, I mean, it brings us, yeah.
Trying to separate it in that way, cause I think we're sort of going out there with like, oh, we can't really cover the water enterprise this tier stuff, it's like, well. Unless we like can't on the land code side, like let's try to keep land use in the land code.
It's just our land use isn't caught up, so it's like, how can we release this slow enough to let us fix it in time?
Yeah, yeah, it's weird, I mean. Yeah, no, for sure, we're not saying the land code is perfect.
Yeah, yeah, I know, cause that's the problem.
So our enterprise, you guys are thinking it's really first come, first served, doesn't matter what you're asking for, and then we try to regulate that through land code.
I mean, not that it's all, I mean, like you said, there's some uses that we've said, you know, we don't, it's not like all uses are on the table because we don't have a lot of water. So, I mean, we're trying to be judicious with the uses, so we're not trying to like allocate it on some life parcel.
Understood.
Yes.
And I think there, we could get a little more sophisticated in like, instead of three year, it's a one year and you have to have some activity. Like, I, I don't know if we even talked about, do you even have land? Like, you don't have land, you buy water.
So that's interesting.
Well, you could buy a share and not actually own the.
I don't know.
But I, I'll, I'll, you can't, you can't apply for inclusion without.
You can't apply for inclusion without land because we don't know where you, your land lies in the boundary.
Yeah, you have to, the structure and the use of the inclusion has to be part of the application.
So wouldn't, wouldn't that be, if you put in a well, be enough for another year, so you got to permit for building?
If you put in the well.
So if you own the property and you got the water, you need to get the water to build, get a building permit, put in the wells instead of you're gonna take the water. And then you go up and building permit, that could be another year out before you get a building permit.
Right, that's where I think there has to be some beneficial use, like, because that ties into. That language there ties into the state and the decree and everything, right? Beneficial use has standards. So that's why I think, yeah, I mean, they could do that, but like the beneficial use of you applying to the well is for the house to be online, so. But we would definitely wanna make sure that's in the language.
You don't wanna be like the house on Sixth Street, where we now we gotta put in a sewer line because he doesn't have a sewer line with the house he built.
Correct.
And we gotta tear up the New County Road to do that.
Yeah.
That's right, there was a little sort from the sanitation district, but things happen, things change, right? So, um. So is there, so based on, could, you and I were talking, Bryce, um, you had said, you know, and you explained the process to me of going to the state. The one that kind of had on the screen, of going to the state engineer just to make sure that you're in line with the decree and then the board at their discretion.
Yes.
Um, back to that word discretion, um, could, could then approve. So you and I had talked about just like, are there any, I mean, would there ever be a case where the board doesn't want to approve? Is there, is there a reason other than those, meeting those three, but they wouldn't even be able to apply, whether it was a residential use or commercial industrial use or livestock? So other than those three criteria, are there any basis by which the board would ever, in their discretion, um, not want to approve a user?
Not.
By the application?
Not as currently written.
So is there any place to find compromise in that of, um, any si- situations or, or basis that the board would? So why, why does it even go to the board then? If there's, if it just, I mean, wouldn't it just be staff, um?
Right.
Just, if, if the board is never going to say no, then why is it the board's discretion?
Administrative approval.
And why isn't it just that you come in and apply and if you, a staff makes sure that it's consistent with the decree, then it. I, I guess I'm not understanding this step with the board's discretion if there's no basis for ever.
That, because that is how the decree is written.
Just allowing it. So does the decree assume that discretion means there would be some type of criteria?
But if there's no.
Isn't, isn't the decree pointing to, if it, I, I, I don't understand discretion without having some criteria.
It could be, it could be possibly because a part of review process is notifying opposers, it's notifying, uh, the state.
Who are opposers?
Uh, anyone, this is, this is any, anyone that's opposers, so it's standard, um, for decrees, but also for applications, it's gonna be published online. A lot of other districts require it to actually be published in the newspaper, it's, um, made available for all members of the public, including those that oppose the use of the water to submit their opposition.
So it could be like liquor licenses, like they come to the VSCC, but I'm looking at all your.
But then.
Times, you, you picked Parkville is also one of those.
So, but then if they oppose, what's your criteria again? I'm just asking, at the discretion of an opposer, you can decide not to, but what basis of opposition could you? I, I'm just asking, cause it just seems like there, there's this discretionary.
I will, I'll grab the language out of the decree and share it over to you.
Oh, I.
So you have kind of.
It seems like that will open you up to a legal liability as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just don't understand discretion.
You can say no, but you can't give me any criteria, that seems like a very dangerous.
Right.
That's very dangerous.
Place to be.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, there'd be some technical criteria, like we were getting into the weeds on like, what kind of metering? And like if you're asking for like a residential one, but you have animals, like do, do we require some separate meterings?
Two.
You know, like there's gonna be stuff that comes up, right, like, that it's not, I mean, that's gonna need some interpretation.
Absolutely, and I think maybe that's where we need to have our water council kind of come up with maybe an interpretation of what discretion is. And, and, and the limits of that within the decree, I'm just going based, our decree is written kind of vaguely, like, like I'm telling you. It, this is the process and, and it says, shall go to the board for approval at their discretion. And then it goes on to the next item of the process, so, um. That's where I think, you know, there has, that's where it comes, it's to us to write the bylaws and to. And yeah, maybe if the discretion is at where this is hanging everybody up, we get an interpretation of that from our water council.
I'm gonna ask a stupid question, why is this not regulated and managed through the permitting, permitting process?
Like through the state?
No, just the building permits approval.
Oh.
Cause in Colorado, water is entirely.
But I understand, but I mean, when they go for a permit. You have to ask them, what are they gonna use it for, right? I mean, do you need a residential, do you need livestock, I mean, so if you only got so much water left, isn't that a limiting factor? And you're permitting, granting a permit for building or?
I mean, it would be when we, I, I don't.
Well, I'm saying when you go for their building permit, you only got so much water usage, right, and you're only gonna divvy that up a number, whatever, feet of, acre feet of water per development or parcel. I mean, it sounds like it should be, it should be controlled and managed through the permitting process.
To some extent it would be, I mean, there is the, the plan that would cover how many bathrooms, how many kitchens.
Yeah.
All that, but it's gonna be secondary to the initial determination, that's the problem. So it doesn't go to planning until well after, potentially, they've bought their water share.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and there's no requirement to have.
Unless we tie the, unless we tie the water usage to the permit.
Only, which is what we're saying, but I mean, if.
Trying to make it easily kind of like Excel, Excel.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was getting at, and that would shorten that window, we, we're talking about too, that I think it's way too long, three years.
I mean, that happens all over. Yeah, I think the, the, the window's gonna be tough and I think the window's gonna have to differ because if they're. If we're talking about a major city that has three separate permitting approvals and different plans and everything, then three years might be what it takes to get that process through.
Can I ask how this is going to affect the, um, never ending Panarc situation?
So.
Because they're in that water district, they just wouldn't qualify.
Correct, so Panarc is in Mount Elba Water Association, they have their own setup.
So even if they can't get a water share or a water certificate because they're out?
Not in Panarc, not inside the metro district boundaries, no, just because that's the way it was written and they already have a legal water supply. I think there's.
I just think we're gonna have people that come and ask because they're out of water and they can't get water certs.
And I, I heard they're doing a better job of managing their water.
What?
I hear they're doing a better job of managing their water now, but.
Yeah, I mean, I always figured that would be ultimately be a customer, somebody in the Panarc, and it may be the case, but I think currently.
Yeah.
It can't be.
They have enough water, I don't know about the cases actually.
Yeah.
Well, but separately from that, they're in a separate water district, so they cannot buy shares from this.
Because they're in a separate water district?
That's what I was thinking.
That's his, that's, that's the proposal, because you have.
I need to clarify that. Okay, so it's not.
We don't want you to be in Parkville and say, oh, I just wanna pay fifty-five hundred dollars instead of seven thousand dollars to get.
True.
Water and I wanna feed, you know, we want you to have a more reliable.
We want to push him towards Parkville.
So you have to exhaust all your options based on where you are.
But there's nothing legally that, um, if they're in MEWA, they can't apply to the decree, if, if MEWA cannot serve, if they cannot serve.
I, I can't speak to that, I need to talk to Chris about that to make sure, to clarify.
I mean, it does seem like we should. Have that pretty well written out, I mean, there, I, and I have mixed feelings about it because I think it's gonna suck for some of those people. Supposedly, you know, that are being told, you can't get a water cert without a building permit and. There's only a handful left is what people are being told out there, so, um, if there's literally only five. Water taps left out there before they can get through water court, that could be yours and there's gonna be a lot of very angry property owners out there. Wanting to be able to build on their lots, so.
Do you, do you want someone to build on your lots, right?
Yeah, existing even because they didn't get a water cert and so.
Oh, they didn't.
Yeah, like there's some people that bought them, but most lots do not have a water tap certificate attached to them, which they probably shouldn't have anyway until.
And they won't, a lot of times they won't let them have them if they think it's gonna be a period of time before they're gonna build, you know, they need to.
They're trying to save them.
Now they wanna know, now they wanna know.
Now they're trying to save them.
They wanna know that a building permit is imminent or they won't sell that.
I heard that they're actually measuring the water they're using now, so it's a good start.
Yeah, but it's caused like problems with people trying to sell their lots because they, cause people aren't sure when they can build and they may not have water when they're ready to build. So you're gonna get a lot of pressure, I think, from that subdivision.
And I think you'll also get pressure on ADUs from that subdivision too.
Yes, or maybe from all of them.
From all of them.
But isn't it somewhat on the owner to understand the water restrictions before they go buy a parcel of land?
Yeah, good luck with that.
Oh, for sure, but that.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know, sometimes knows the answer.
What was the question again?
But, but you know what, people are buying the, a lot of assumptions.
Well, that's on them so much, I don't understand that, I guess.
But I do think that dry lots are something that are kind of another, you know.
But if you think about, if you bought that lot and it wasn't the problem. And now you're ready to build and guess what, you now can't have water, but you bought it with the premise that you have water, that's the problem. And that's not really your problem, you know? So that's the problem.
Unless you got a water district that can manage it, that gets back to communication, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just why, this is, um. The blue shade is the augmentation plan area and then the darker, you know, the solid blue on top of that are parcels eligible for major subdivision. So.
You mean, major or minor?
Major or minor, yeah, but, but they're big enough that they could be divided five or more times.
And some of those, there's that reason right there, the IM, I think there's, there's something big enough in there.
Probably, oh yeah, this guy, yeah, so this isn't that from last year, so this is a little different now, but just to give you an idea of how many parcels.
There's. That are in Stone. Maybe that's included.
And then what is it in closer to town?
Pardon?
Do you have the map showing it closer to town too?
And then green are conserved parcels. Major sub eligible parcels within hog plants are.
Mm-hmm.
This is a little deceptive, you know, this is all county owned land. Um, this will never be subdivided, it's really not developable, but.
That's a bad country, anyway.
Bad country, yeah, and geo stuff, and then this is owned by a water company. Um, but yeah, so around there though, and then the green ones are conserved, they can't be developed or at least they'd be significantly harder to. And then I might even have the three mile plan to just, yeah. So this is a good one, cause we, you know, within the three mile plan, this is obviously, we're trying to incentivize development towards the centralized infrastructure, including Parkville, Lego Sand. So when you're looking at it, like what's eligible for the hog plan or that we wanna see that's outside of that problem area, it's really this stuff over here, you know, it's, um.
And down track and those areas.
Yeah, and so, they're like, you know, Highway twenty-four and then I don't even know what you call it, Summerville Ranch area and.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. Anywhere else you wanna zoom in on?
No, thanks.
So yeah, I mean, I think it's an exciting prospect, it's, it's, um. It's tool the county has and, but you know, we all know enough to know that there's, it's not gonna be all sunshine and rainbows and there's gonna be some consequences. And, um.
Yeah, and unlike, you know, Excel, which I understand, you know, the perspective is utility and we're still the county and it's still about future land use and. We're gonna incentivize development, so it, it is a little different perspective than, um, your traditional delivery, um, utility provider. Um, you know, that's just delivering a utility and it's invested within the future design of the community as much.
Well, I mean, I've also, I've, I've often asked Parkville that question, like, do you take inventory of how much water you have left before you tell? This group that they'll, that you'll serve them, and they're like, nope, how are we gonna? I mean, I think they should know how much water they have left before they need to build storage. But I just wonder how Parkville would go through that process of like determining where they think things should be built. If this is the body that determines where things should be built.
I mean, they always are looking for inclusion within their district, I, I think it will, it will be, yeah, but.
Yeah, no, me and Parkville always communicate that they have plenty of water, that, you know, it's the first thing out of Greg's mouth, but.
Very keen, right.
So, so is there some reason on the three mile limitation for Parkville, like, can they never go beyond that or?
Oh no, they can.
No, the three mile plan is like part of a comprehensive plan and, and during jurisdiction conversations over what collectively we want to encourage.
It's part of the land.
Within the periphery of the city.
Okay, someone just said there was.
Typically where we wanna look at densification and where we wanna look at connectivity and.
Are limitations on where they.
They, yeah, they don't actually have, they're, we're only currently limited on them because of where they currently run and. And they aren't paying to put the infrastructure in.
Yeah.
You know, it's the developer, the development, right? So the issue has been the constraints that way, but not because Parkville can't. Um, it's been the constraints of cost of pulling it. And if you think about like where they end on County Four or where they end on Mountain View, beyond that, it's fairly densely subdivided already on wells. So why run lines down there? So that's part of the barrier to them expanding.
I feel like those dense, that dense well network you have right outside the periphery is what we wanna avoid doubling up on with the enterprise, right? I don't think the enterprise would be super happy about entertaining a subdivision like that when it, you know, is close to the periphery or in that kind of development zone. But in the past, that's been the way the developers have gotten past is just back when water rights were also a lot more affordable too. You have a lot of those subdivisions that they got their own water rights and subdivided out and had an augmentation plan just for an individual neighborhood.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how to on the land use side, you know, for now, you know, I feel like we have some things to put on our plate. It's like from the land use side and thinking about Mike and stuff, it's like when we plan these subdivisions, we're already like thinking through. And I don't think we have to worry about it with this first feat of of water, but like, you know, we we already planned for a certain amount of density on those roads. But now if there's not a new subdivision process necessarily, it's just a. Cause if it's in an existing subdivision, for instance, on Kenra Nine or Kenra Four or something like that, and they can meet the minimum lot size requirement. And now they have water to do it, we're adding density in areas that we didn't plan for through a subdivision process. And they don't have to go through major because they're already red. You know what I mean? So like, there's just things like that, that like now we have to try to figure out what are some of those like.
Impacts.
Impacts that we wanna make sure we do mitigate through the complaint and through rezon, you know, land use regulations that take some time to pass.
It's gonna be the kicker. Is this a law applicable before that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I guess that's what I'm saying, like, in my opinion, it'd be great if it was slowly. Released just so that we can see what we need to impact, you know, what 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 of all that list of things we should jump on first, you know? Like, okay, this group really should mobilize on the periphery or no, we're seeing more impacts in Flint. Or no, we're seeing an issue in major subdivision versus minor, whatever it is, it just would be nice to know, kind of see what what happens with you guys with these first. Bits that get brought up and what is that? Is there an impact? Maybe there's not an impact at all. I think that'd be helpful for us to, cause there's a lot of, I feel like it changes a lot just because, like I said, I think we've always operated like like county on the idea that that was managing some of our land use for us, water was. Yeah, for utility access in general.
Do you have anything to add or do you wanna comment on?
Nobody does. Every time we can buy something else that does not have a road or drainage or everything. Especially now because there's roads where there shouldn't have been those. We're having to deal with the county taking them over already, so there's no drainage, there's no culverts. Now that's on the county to do.
Right, I I think it's just that, you know, kind of that, and I turn back on that complex plan is, you know, really trying to understand balancing the environmental constraint, the fluctuations and fiscal health of the county and the county service partners. So I think that.
I mean, could a discretionary thing be, you know.
That are comp plan.
It doesn't have obvious impacts and it meets comp plan, you know, like, I mean, can you have like some super simple on your discretionary like tools that the board can use since we don't necessarily know what those are yet? If they were like those kinds of simple things that we also make anybody else, CP, subdivision, any of those people follow is that it's fits within the comp plan and it doesn't show any obvious environmental or access or whatever impacts. I mean, is that fair to put that in there or does that cause problems too? Like if this board in staff were able to add those as their discretionary checklist.
Yeah.
You know, even even the future land use map, you know, does designate some of those areas. I'm not gonna say that it's absolutely hundred percent right, but rural and remote, but it shows residential development of the IM parcels. But it does show rural and remote of the, everything south of E two. So, which is not necessarily where you wanna obviously put more density, but. But yes, we've long relied on the fact that most people will not get an augmentation plan in order to further subdivide. And with all those parcels and single ownership for all these years, basically since the probate was approved by the court. We haven't, it's just kind of set silent. So there's there's this new trend happening. If we can get some better examples from other modern conservation districts.
Yeah, like what are they, what is their discretion equal? Yeah.
Right, like can one person buy them all?
Cause if we can point to the.
They wanted to. You can't speculatively buy and then if they wanted to put all that money down and then lose all of the money and everything, cause they couldn't put it into beneficial use. I'm just, you know.
So the answer is yeah.
Is it possible?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have to, some speculation, I mean.
Yeah, you'd be sure.
Not to.
It is, so with your point. Is the check and balance on this the same from district to district? That's what's confusing to me. If we benchmarked other ones, are they trying to use this is the benchmark or this is the place to make the decision? Or are they tying it to some other? I don't know, review?
I think what we have seen, but we will ask and get more information, is that it is very much a utility. And if we have the water, you can receive the water.
That makes more sense to me, I guess.
So I'm for our.
So we, but we'll we'll see if the like what other circumstances they've experienced that allow them to.
Yes. I look at, I know it's oversimplifying it, and I look at more like a a utility restriction, you're just, you know. Somehow you gotta get it out there to them before they actually buy the property or do what they wanna do with it, but I don't know how you do that, I guess.
And if if you were to purchase it, can you resell it to someone else?
Yeah.
That's written somewhere or?
I don't know if we actually have it written in there, but that is not, that is not.
Well, they're gonna have a, if it attaches, it has to, right?
They're missing the water.
But it um attaches with the property.
Yeah, and there's there's an assignment process for when you transfer the.
So if Joseph had created his four parcels, then those transfer.
The units themselves are not like, you know.
Yeah, like you can't buy a unit and then not use it and transfer it somehow.
Okay. I'm saying, do they get another three years every time it moves to somebody else? And could they sell that property within their family to other people to continue?
Yeah, do water rights transfer?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Having it for twenty years and never doing anything.
I think we should put that, cause I mean, the I do, I think Upper Arc gets a good amount of revenue. They they have a two-year limit and if you don't use it, you have to apply again.
Yeah, I would think.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Because the property changed too.
So you can have a shorter year without any, with with some activity?
Yeah.
Or we can figure out what that looks like between one and three years.
Yeah, I would be interested to hear if like any of them tie like that discretionary piece to something like the comp plan. Only because if we're gonna work on the comp plan, then we would know to look at it through that lens.
And I I guess just one last thought, just for at least from our perspective is the, in real time, you know, we just recently had a local family that was trying to find a way to divide their parcels so they could put a modular on it for their kids. Second generation family kind of situation, so you know, it I guess I would still ask, you know, is there the ability to to hold back any type of resource for those kind of situations? When it is, you know, a a primary residence that's serving community and the workforce or I don't, you know, something that that aligns with knowing what our community needs assessment looks like. And what our housing crisis is, is there any consideration for any amount that could be earmarked for or prioritized for primary ownership?
Yeah, I mean, I think that my only reason to be super behind that is because I think we have to incentivize primary ownership as much as possible right now. And trying to get super complicated with, in my opinion, deed restrictions and all of the other pieces that are flying around right now. Obviously, those haven't happened because they're too complicated and they're gonna take lots of time. But this seems like, this is a great example to me of a really simple way to like just pull a couple aside that those are only earmarked for primary. Like if that's the only criteria they have to meet, like that feels good at least to me. I don't really care how much they make, but if they're gonna live here full-time, that's fantastic, you know? And I feel like right now, that's the battle we have is is we're we're in a place where we're battling how many people live here full-time. And yes, I know there's income attached to that, but I think the biggest battle is really making sure that we get our our local housing secured. So it'd be cool if that was a possibility. I understand that there's a lot of pieces to that, but.
Well, we're gonna be talking about this with the board tomorrow at nine AM in the work session. All of these recommendations will be talked about again before they are not fresh, so.
Cool.
I really appreciate the conversation, though I think there's a lot to think about. And a lot of, there's a lot of nuance to here and there's. There's no way any of us is gonna get this perfect right away, so it's gonna take all of us together.
I have another question. You you talked, somebody said, we're not discounting water. Is there a way you can charge a premium if they don't meet primary ownership? You know, as a, and you know, a developer comes in and they wanna subdivide, well, it doesn't meet the.
Governmentation usage.
Right, charge them a premium for their shares versus giving a discount on all shares if you, I don't I don't.
Yeah, another way to look at it.
I mean, you're talking about selling a product, right? That's what we're really doing here.
Mm-hmm.
If you got the money, then you might be paying a premium if you buy it from one place and, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think typically we do not see that either, but we'll ask to make sure that that isn't happening or that hasn't changed.
That would be a good thing to finish out.
But if you wanna divide and build two houses, you're paying two application fees. If you wanna divide, you have the money at the forty, you pay forty, I'm like, you know, that that's kind of a portion that you are spending.
Right, but those aren't necessarily primary owners, right?
Right.
And that's what we're talking about. If there's a way to incentivize being a primary owner, you don't have to pay a premium on top of it.
For some developer or an individual.
Right.
An investor person.
Right.
Yeah, I think especially recognizing how much water supply plans do cost subdivision. If they had to go out on the open market and acquire their own shares and go through an augmentation plan, you know, there's a, that's not a.
Well, the reason you're seeing so much current interest in E Hill and Panarc is because that's the cheapest place you can possibly build in a county right now. And even that is becoming more affordable for a local primary owner. So the primary owners have no options other than the ones that are coming in asking us if they can, can I just add our kids modular to our back acre? Can I just do this thing? And they may not even wanna subdivide it. They may just want their extra water rights for the second dwelling, you know? And so that to me is where this could be super exciting is like, as long as they're not creating problems with that extra density. It's, if we're gonna allow the share, if we got to pick, it should be nice to do it to this family that's been trying to afford a place to live here. More than it, more than the person who's like psyched to have him and his buddy build their new mansions on ten acres, you know? So that's, that's all. It just would be cool if there was a way to simply, I understand that it can get very complex very fast, which is why lots of things don't happen. But if you could do a very simple, these are allocated to primary owners only and that was it and that was, that did and that was simple somehow, that would be awesome. Just cause it would be cool to see if you could figure out people like that.
Yeah, one of these go on sale, cause I'd like to buy.
It was like a Navy.
Exactly, right, I mean.
There are lots of employees that need a Navy right now, obviously.
Maybe we can, they'll go fast.
Cool, thanks for.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, thank you all for.
And I'm happy to answer any more questions as you have them, as we're working on this.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, work session with the board tomorrow to talk about specifically the E Hill thing, cause this is a big thing that we need to figure out. Before we get this thing up and running.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get crazy. Thanks for your hard work, sir.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Is there a second thing on the agenda?
No, we're just both.
Okay, good.
Thanks for the hard work.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Second.
On paper.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was.
Howard was on.
He would, he left a while ago.
He might still be on.
Hi.
No, you are still there.
Yeah.
Your picture.
I'm still here.
Minimize it so he would, so we could see more.
Oh, I see. Hi, Howard.
Hi, Howard.
Hi. Have a good one, everybody. Bye.
Bye. Tomorrow, that's all you got open? No, that's what you're open or that's what you're already bumped to? Tomorrow, you're open twelve to one?
Yeah, I'll make it worse.
Twelve to one, you're on.